Our next case is going to be LTI Holdings. This is a continuation of a previous hearing for conditional use permit for a general purpose borrow pit. And who's going to be presenting this for the staff today?
That'll be Donald, Madam Chair, and I had a couple of questions just before we begin, or and a couple of things that I wanted to address before we begin, if I may.
Please.
Okay, so first of all, I did just want to remind everyone of the public hearing process and what that entails. Just because we don't, we are, you know, kind of coming in virtually, I wanted to just provide that for everyone that we'll have the staff introductions and presentation. And starting that off, my name is Jenny Bourbonne, and I'm the Acting Secretary for the Planning Commission, as well as the Land Use Manager for the, or the Planning Manager for the Land Use Division of the Planning and Community Development Department. After the presentation, we would ask for other government agency input, followed by the applicant or representative's input. Those who wish to speak in favor and those who wish to speak not in favor. Afterwards, the hearing was closed for Planning Commission member deliberations, including motions to approve or not approve, followed by the decision to be voted and decided on the day of the hearing. We are asking that everyone, including the Planning Commission, hold off any questions until after staff's presentation. We are also asking you to raise your virtual hand and wait to be called upon, and when you are called upon, then you would need to state your name and record, or state your name and address for the record, I apologize. And to please be concise with your statements, minimize repetitiveness, and direct the comments directly to the Planning Commission, not the audience or the applicant. That all being said, we, this is a continuance of a previous hearing held on March 12, 2020. The applicant had submitted a new proposed access to the borrow pit through an easement off of Fish Lake Road prior to the previous hearing. The St. Louis County considered the haul road as part of the extractive use, and therefore the new proposed access required additional written notice to be sent to landowners, which is essentially why the case was tabled. All the new information brought forth since the last hearing was included in the Planning Commission's packet, and any changes to the staff report from March 12, 2020 hearing were underlined in that staff report. The presenter, Donald Rigney, our Senior Planner, will be highlighting some of the new information since that last hearing. And so with that being said, Madam Chair, unless the Board or Planning Commission or you have any questions, of me, I'll hand it over to Donald.
Yeah. And Dave Pollak.
Dave.
I'm asking Jenny a question. You said something about, is the county attorney going to speak to us before this begins? Or just be there for questions we have of him?
He is, he is not, he does not have anything to present currently. He is available and on the line on the call if questions come up that he needs to address.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jenny, for explaining all the details in conducting this meeting. Donald, you're up.
All right, with that, I'm Donald Rigney. I'll be presenting this case. And as was previously stated, this is a continuance from a hearing in March for LTI Holdings LLC for a general purpose borrow pit at 6464 Friedenberg Lake Road in Duluth, Friedenberg Township. So since that last hearing, there's been some new information presented. In the March hearing, the proposed entrance was originally off of Friedenberg Lake Road, Township Road, that has since changed to Fish Lake Road, CASA 43 via 66-foot wide easement. At the time of the last hearing, there had been no road authority approval, and since then, they'd had been applied for a driveway access permit for, by St. Louis County Public Works, and that had been issued off of Fish Lake Road. Far as the last hearing went, there was no letter of intent regarding the easement and the location. Since then, there's been a signed letter of intent by the property owners allowing that easement. As far as the proposal goes, there is a couple minor changes. Previously, washing was included, that was not included in the updated application since then. Screening is now proposed as year-round, not just April through December. And crushing and recycling of asphalt was stated to only be for Fish Lake Road reconstruction, whereas before it said only if a hot mix plant was present. And total area of excavation was reduced from 22 acres to 19 acres. With that, we'll move on to the presentation. The proposed operation will include crushing, screening, portable hot mix, and the recycling of asphalt. Screening will occur year-round. Crushing and the recycling of asphalt will only occur for the reconstruction of Fish Lake Road. The property will be accessed through a 66-foot wide easement via Fish Lake Road. And the easement for the haul road encompasses approximately 1.82 acres. The total area to be excavated has been reduced from 22 acres to 19 acres. It is estimated that 100,000 cubic yards of material will be removed each year, and the hours of operation will meet the standard hours of operation per St. Louis County zoning ordinance 62. Here is the property just south of Friedenberg Lake and north of Fish Lake Road, off of Friedenberg Lake Road, zoned to multiple use four. And this is the applicant's sketch showing where the excavation would be with setbacks. And you'll see on the bottom of the sketch is the easement coming into the property. This is shifted to the south. You'll see Fish Lake Road on the south, and this is showing the full easement, 100-foot setback from the property on the east, going straight north to the 40-acre parcel that's being proposed for borrow pit. Here is an elevation of the 40-acre parcel, along with the wetlands highlighted from the NWI map, northeast corner, southeast corner, as well as southwest corner. This is showing only residential properties within, or dwellings rather, within a quarter mile, and that is 16 dwellings within a quarter mile of that 40-acre parcel. Here, what you see in purple dots are the authorized privately-owned pits. There are 11 of them within one and a half mile radius of the proposal, which is highlighted in red there, two of which are within a half a mile of the proposed pit. Staff facts and findings. Plans and official controls. Zoning ordinance 62, Article 5, Section 5.6b indicates general purpose borrow pits are in allowed use with a conditional use permit. A proposed site falls within the lake shore development area of the St. Louis County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This area is intended for rural development next to lakes, including infill and redevelopment of residential properties, as well as commercial and mixed uses. Neighborhood compatibility. Property is located approximately 175 feet from the shoreline of Friedenberg Lake. Majority of the parcels within this area are larger, except for the shoreline riparian areas. Most parcels in the area are residentially developed. There are 16 residential dwellings within a quarter mile of the subject property. This does not include the residential dwelling on the subject property. The closest residence not on the parcel from the proposed haul road is 187 feet, same residence is 230 feet to the south of the pit area. All undisturbed buffer areas will be maintained. The distance from the existing residence has changed due to the haul road location change. The proposal includes crushing and portable hot mix, which has the potential for an increased impact to surrounding residential properties through added noise and smell. The proposal states that, on average, 20 trucks will leave the pit per day, which has the potential to impact residential properties with added noise and traffic. Early development. The development in the area is primarily residential. However, there are two borrow pits within a half mile of the proposed pit, the closest being 600 feet to the south of the subject parcel. There are a total of 11 privately-owned authorized borrow pits within one and a half miles of the subject property. Property, as well as the surrounding area away from the lakes, is zoned to multiple use. The zone district allows for a wide range of uses, including borrow pits, commercial and residential uses. Subject parcel and the surrounding area away from the lakes is zoned multiple use four, requiring a minimum of four and a half acres, however, the majority of the parcels are between 6 and 40 acres. Desirable pattern of development. Development consists of lake shore homes along the riparian corridor with larger acreage, acreage residential properties, and two borrow pits outside the shoreline area. Future land use map identifies the proposed area within the lake shore development area. As stated in the St. Louis County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, the LDA is given flexibility necessary to allow for evolving nature of the rural economy, which includes allowances for businesses that are essential to the ability to live and work in rural areas. Other factors. The proposed entrance onto Fish Lake Road has been deemed reasonably acceptable from a traffic safety perspective by St. Louis County Traffic Engineer. For specific road projects and extractive use public works project borrow pit application may be submitted. This application allows for crushing portable hot mix and the recycling of asphalt within a limited timeline of the authorized use. The Planning Commission criteria for approval of a conditional use permit. Does the use conform to the land use plan? Is the use compatible with the existing neighborhood? Will the use impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding area? Is the location and character of the proposed use considered consistent with a desirable pattern of development? What, if any, other factors should be taken into consideration on this case? Recommended conditions, if approved. In the event that the Planning Commission determines that the proposal meets the criteria for an extractive use Class II, following conditions shall apply. Condition precedent: The applicant shall obtain access approval from the appropriate road authority. Conditions concurrent: All minimum extractive use standards shall be followed. The extractive use activity shall be limited to less than 40 acres, as legally described as the Northwest Corridor, the Northwest Corridor, Section 24, Township 52, Range 15, including the haul road as described in the letter of intent, Exhibit A, between the applicant and adjoining property owners. The applicant shall adhere to all county, state, and federal regulations. The Wetland Conservation Act shall be followed, and no crushing, recycling of asphalt, or hot mix plant allowed without the submission and approval of an extractive use Class I Performance Standard permit. We received numerous correspondence. What you're seeing in this map in green was the correspondence that had addresses associated with it from our March hearing. And what you see in the purple is the hearing correspondence for this hearing today. Any questions from the Planning Commission?
I don't see any.
Madam Chair, appears Commissioner Neverman, can you hand it up?
Oh.
I guess just during some of the testimony, or even as we are speaking, maybe instead of blank screen the Planning Commission, maybe we could have one of Donald's maps up, maybe with the, you know, so we can at least relate to the roles. I know we have them in our packet, but it's kind of nice looking at that screen, too.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Dave. Dave, I see your hands raised.
I was muted. Okay, here we go. Donald, the, one for the hot mix recycling, such, that is not allowed during, unless it's a special project, is that correct?
That was referencing a, the performance standard for a public works borrow pit application. It's allowed during a two-year permit.
What I'm trying to understand is, go back to the one where it says about, a couple pages, I mean, I'm having a hard, let's go, one more the other way, go the other way. It says where no, okay, okay, hold on. No crushing, recycling of asphalt, or hot mix plant allowed without the submission and approval of an extractive Class I Performance Standard permit. What does that mean?
Madam Chair, I may be able to answer that if you want me to, Donald.
Go ahead.
Please.
Thank you, this is Jenny here. We had added that condition, that is not, you know, that is a use that's allowed within an extractive use Class II. However, staff felt that it may be a condition that the Planning Commission would want to consider, that if there was an asphalt or hot mix plant, that it be applied for through an extractive use Class I Performance Standard permit, as an additional assurance that we would be looking at all the standards that are in place for that. But it is a use that is allowed in an extractive use Class II, conditional use permit, if the Planning Commission chooses to allow that. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, but, so what that means is you're making this as an additional condition that this would not be allowed unless they applied for this Class I Performance Standard permit, correct?
That is what we are suggesting, if the Planning Commission deems that this is a use that would be allowed here.
Okay, I follow that. And what I was getting from the presentation is, the only time that this would come into play is for a Fish Lake Road project, and that would be only if they were the selected vendor to do the work on that. Is that correct?
If that's a question for me, I would say yes, that appears to be the case.
Yeah, so in other words, none of these, these, the crushing and the recycling would not be done unless they got a contract connected with Fish Lake Road, otherwise it's out of the picture, and, and the worst of the situation potentially is alleviated.
Depending on what the Planning Commission decides, yes.
Yes, yes, I've got you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see any other questions from the Board members at this time. I would like to ask if there's anyone in our virtual audience that is government agency or a township official that would like to address the Board at this time?
Madam Chair, I don't see any hand raised for any township officials.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. With that, is the applicant in the audience? I would like to just state your name and address for the record, this would be your time to address the Board.
Madam Chair, it does appear that the applicant is in the audience. Mr. Koneski, can you hear us? It does appear that he is unmuted, however, I'm not sure if you want to give him a few moments to see if he can connect. Madam Chair, if we could pause for a moment, we'll try and connect with the applicant. Madam Chair, this is Jenny again. I believe there is a representative for the applicant also on the call. May we try unmuting that attendee to see if they wish to speak?
Let's try that, please. Okay. One moment. We can hear you, hello. Could you state your name and address?
Yes, this is, this is Matt Henka, I'm with the Freiburger Law Firm. Our address is 302 West Superior Street, Suite 700, and I'm working with the applicant.
Thank you. At this point of our hearing, would be your opportunity to address the Board and share any facts or information that you would like.
Great, and I can be very brief here, and I know the applicant and the Koneski family specifically, we're hoping to make a few statements here today, too. Hopefully that'll work out, but I'll just kind of highlight what my understanding and hit a few high points here. The Koneski family, they've been around the community for many years, they've assisted in many projects, and, and it's our position, this permit will allow them to continue to serve the community. As the staff pointed out very well, this, this is a, this is, they're seeking a conditional use permit for a borrow pit, and extractive uses are allowed in this district with the permit. So it is a specifically provided use, as long as the ordinance conditions are met, as the Commission knows. I believe the staff report shows that LTI is prepared and has met the conditions. And one thing I'd like to highlight that was mentioned in the staff report is that there are currently 11 existing borrow pits within a mile and a half of this one. And in fact, as, as was pointed out, there's one within 600 feet of the proposal. So while there are some rural residential homes, this is also clearly a borrow pit area, and the permit would allow a compatible use in an area that is currently utilized generally for borrow pits. So it's our position that the fact support, that the permit, allowing the permit will support orderly development and continue a use that is compatible, and that has been found to be compatible. One thing I did want to point out, I know that, I'd like to briefly acknowledge that there has been some town opposition expressed, both through letters and then officially through the town, but I'd like to respectfully point out that the town here is not the zoning authority. The town has assigned that to the county, and that's why we're here in front of the county. The applicant did apply under the existing county zoning code related to borrow pits, and that is their responsibility to ensure that those code provisions are met, and those are the rules at play. As I pointed out, I believe the record and the staff report outlines that the conditions are met, and we are here to request, respectfully request, that the permit be granted. That's all I have at this point, unless there's questions for me, and hopefully the applicant can, can give a little statement, too.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Board members this time? I'm seeing no hands raised. Would the applicant, Matt, would be your opportunity to address the Board?
Madam Chair, it looks like we, we did get some correspondence saying that if we unmuted Mr. Tom, that the applicant should be able to speak that way as well.
Okay.
We're going to unmute Mr. Tom, and hopefully get Mr. Koneski on.
Okay, thank you, Jenny.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, can you state your name and record, or address for the record?
Steve Koneski, 6035 Lavac Road.
Hi, Steve, we can hear you now. Do you have anything you would like to share with the Board?
A couple things here. We would like to reinstate that the product that is, you know, coming out of this pit was tested as a MOD 7, commonly used in road construction, building foundations, and septic systems, for mound systems. In the next, number two, in the next three to five years, MPNL is going to be selling a large amount of property. And a lot of these properties are going to have to be, require compliance inspections for their septics. We don't know how many are going to need it, but there would be a few, you know, quite a few. And they would need a dependable supply of septic sand in the area to keep the costs, you know, relative to today. And then the third thing would be is we, we will continue managing the tree farm under the supervision of Bell Pole. And the intended use of the property at the end would be residential development.
Does anyone, Ray, do you have a question for the applicant? I see your hand is raised.
I had my hand raised a long time ago. What the attorney said before for the applicant, and he raised the issue regarding the township and their ordinance on the temporary moratorium. I would like to get the county attorney's opinion as to that, and what the, you know, the- I would like to get the county attorney's opinion as to that and what the, you know, the agreement they have with ARDC, because I think that's important to the whole issue.
Okay, Ray, we will get right back to that question.
All right, that's what I had before.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make, so make sure there's anyone else who have any questions for the applicant, and I don't see any at that time. So thank you, sir, for your testimony. And that being said, can we have our county attorney answer this question, please?
Madam Chair, Planning Commissioners, this is Thomas Stanley from St. Louis County Attorney's Office. The process that currently exists for applying for a conditional use permit in Friedenberg Township is to apply to the St. Louis County Planning Commission. To the best of my knowledge, I'm not aware that with the moratorium or any other ordinance that Friedenberg has passed at this point, that they have established a process by which someone could obtain a conditional use permit. Because the application was submitted to the county and because the county has been processing conditional use permit applications on behalf of essentially, maybe not on behalf of is the right phrase to use, but because of the fact that Friedenberg has not had a process by which someone could apply for a conditional use permit. The county handles those. It's within the county's jurisdiction. And therefore, you pursuant to Minnesota Statute 15.99, have to act on an application that's properly before the St. Louis County Planning Commission. And that's why you're having the hearing today. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, now I am going to open, let someone in the audience address the board. And I'd first like to see if there's anyone in the virtual audience that would like to speak in favor of this proposal. Actually, can't really tell, so.
Madam Chair, Mr. Nelson, I'd like to request a personal privilege, please.
Yes.
Take a five-minute break?
Let's take a five-minute break. We'll just recess for five minutes. We will reconvene at 12:38.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jenny.
So I think we may have missed over a government agency, so I think that is where we will need to start back up when we reconvene.
I did ask for that.
Yes, and I don't know that they were able to raise their virtual hand in time. But it does appear that one of the supervisors is on the call and would like to be, I'm assuming, would like to be unmuted. So when we get back, we're going to attempt to do that for them, if that's okay with you.
That's a great, thank you. Okay, well, I've noticed that it's 12:38, so let's reconvene our meeting. Jenny, would you unmute the township supervisor that would like to address the board? And please, when speaking, please say your name and address for our record.
Angie, can you, Clayton Sitch, please?
I am trying to unmute him. He will not unmute.
Hmm, that may be the problem. Mr. Sitch, if you can hear us. I don't believe that you are unmuted on your end, and we are attempting to unmute you on our end. It does appear, Madam Chair, that there's some indication that Mr. Sitch may not be hearing us and/or fully engaged, as there's an attention button that shows up that if someone is maybe trying to do something else. Now I don't. Mr. Sitch, are you there?
I am. I was, I couldn't get through at all.
Okay, we can hear you now. So, Madam Chair, I believe she's going to allow us to step back and have you provide some testimony.
Correct.
Anyway, my name is Clayton Sitch, and I'm the Chair of Friedenberg Township. And the only reason that we got, we moved forward with having, looking at a moratorium to think through and to study our township to see where all pits should be placed in our town. Because as you can clearly see, our town is mostly water, one-third water. And as far as, I had a conversation with one of the township, not township, but the county board members in the parking lot after the last board meeting up there for their planning. And he told me the permit was going to go through no matter what. Well, it left me kind of cold, so I spent three days trying to find out exactly what we might be able to do. Well, I called Mr. Fenske from Minnesota Association of Townships, and this was his solution. He did have one thing that he did say, "As long as they haven't put a shovel in the ground, a moratorium will work." Maybe it will, maybe it won't. But I certainly think that the township of water should certainly be studied to let us know where the pits can be. Because we will end up with probably another 12 pits in the town if it's left up to the county. And if we, I mean, ARDC is a government agency. We're paying $25,000 to have them study it. We're not just sitting here and trying to shoot from the hip. And it's, 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 those, our neighborhoods are set up for residential. And there could be, there could be up to 12 houses on the same piece of property. I don't know what else to do. It's very frustrating to say that, you know, we have no standing and no future as to what's going to happen to our town. So we are a target now. If you vote this one through, how many, how many actual pits can we have in our town? Is it, appears to me that if you look at some of these other areas that you just gave permits to, that they would have the opportunity to have endless amounts of pits. And believe me, this sand exists someplace else. There's a gentleman on the corner of Beaver River Road and Fish Lake Road, the Johnson Trust, they said if you guys need a gravel for something, a temporary pit, he would be more than happy to open it up for that period of time. But it is somewhat disheartening to think that we have no idea how many pits we're going to have. We will continue on with our study to find out what we need. But it's unfortunate that you're not going to look at the study and, and hear the voice of the people. And I think everybody else is having the same doggone trouble I am getting through to you. So you didn't have, you know, and maybe you had some of that with some of the other people that wanted to call in, because it's, this is not a perfect situation, and it can be difficult. So that's mostly what I have to say, and good luck to us. And it won't hurt to have it studied and wait a few months. It's only about four and a half months left for the study to be complete, and then we'll have a better picture of our town. I thank you.
So now Jenny, do we have any other government agencies, or can I open this testimony up to the public?
I don't believe we do, Madam Chair, but what we could do is that if there is another government agency on, and this is for only government agencies at this point, we can unmute all attendees for that government agency to state that they are on the line and would like to provide any information. After we do that, I would mute everybody that's on the attendee list again, and then we can go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
So once I see that everyone is unmuted, I'll ask, I can ask the question if there's any other government agencies on your behalf, if you don't mind.
Rent schedule, schedule.
Are there any other government agencies on the line?
So you've got close ASAP, it's in the next, your next couple of weeks.
It appears that there are, Madam Chair, so.
Rent schedule will be closed. What do you owe on the mortgage, do you know?
Madam Chair, we did our best event, attempt to provide the opportunity, I believe, for any other township, or excuse me, government agencies to provide input. We can ask the question once again after, if people are having trouble with the virtual hand raising. But I would say if you wish to continue, maybe that would be what we should do at this point.
Well, yes, and I also noticed there is an attendee, Melissa Bell, that has had her hand raised.
Yes, and I was, we were waiting for you to open it up for either public testimony. I don't know that Melissa Bell is a government agency, but we can ask that if we unmute her.
Yeah, because I'm not seeing any more government agencies at this time, but however you would like.
Why don't we, I would say let's unmute Ms. Bell and see if she is a government agency. If she is, let's provide that testimony. If not, we will mute Ms. Bell until such time, Madam Chair, that you would like to take other testimony. Ms. Bell, are you a government agency?
I am not.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Jenny.
Madam Chair, how would you like to proceed?
If you want to try another, again, for the government agency, it didn't seem very fruitful, though. And then I was going to just open it up to some public comments.
Okay, Madam Chair, you let us know when you're ready for that.
I'm ready.
Okay, it appears Ms. Bell was the first attendee with her hand raised, so we will unmute Ms. Bell to provide testimony, Madam Chair.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, well, thank you.
Please state your name and address before you address the board. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Bell. My address is 6382 Beaver River Road. Is it okay to speak now?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. I do oppose the approval of this borrow pit. I've grown up in Friedenberg, and I'm used to coexisting with borrow pits. However, as Friedenberg Township has grown, there is no more room to safely be adding more borrow pits. I sent lots of emails out with safety concerns, environmental concerns, none of which really have been answered. Mr. Lund from Public Works wrote a letter to Don about that he feels that Fish Lake Road is safe and that it will be more safe when the road is reconstructed. However, if you look at his, his information, he is, these are assumptions, anticipations. But I've grown up here, and one, we're hoping that this road construction will be 2023, but we have no guarantee of this. The road is so dangerous right now. I'm sure most of you received the pictures I sent. I tried to take my family on a walk while I took those pictures, and it was very dangerous. They had to stand in the ditch most of the time. You know, assuming, he assumes people will drive 45 miles an hour on this road. That is very incorrect. So I ask you to read through what I wrote and relook at that, because the information is just not correct. And also, just looking at the environmental impact like Clay talked about, has, did LTI, were they required to do an environmental permit for this to check to see how it would affect the property? I know there are sandhill cranes on the property. Those are migratory birds. Has there been a permit for that? I have lots of questions, and I think the community has lots of questions. We feel, like Clay said, that we're being told tough luck, and that is just a heartbreak, because our community is wonderful. And I just, it's hard when we kind of think it's a done deal, and we'd just like you guys to listen and reread some information that was sent. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And so, I've just noticed I see another hand raised, Greg Flanagan. Please state your name and address.
Greg, Greg Flanagan, address is 6467 Friedenburg Lake Road. I want to touch on a few things that were covered through the facts and findings as it relates to the five criteria that the committee is looking to use as a basis for approval rejection of this permit. I also want to tie it back to some information that was shared verbally on prior calls. I'll first pick on B2, which makes reference to the 15 now noted 16 residential dwellings within a quarter mile. I found it quite interesting on the other two permit requests, that assessment was done at one-third and one-half miles, and the number of residential dwellings was significantly lower. If this was looked at on that broader basis, I think you'd see a double or triple. To that same point, it was also shared earlier that based on the additional easement, there were additional 11 residents that were issued notice. Yet that somehow only equated to one additional residential dwelling within a quarter mile. I find the math on that hard to comprehend. Bottom line is, there is a significant amount of residential properties. They border three of the four areas, only to the south is there not a residential property beyond the people that occupy that pit, which have a vested interest in agreeing to the easement. Relative to then number C1 under orderly development, and as reinforced by Matt Hinks, there is a pit within 600 feet. That pit is primarily a dormant pit used for auto mechanic work and storage of vehicles. We received as part of the staff report that that pit was originally believed to start in 1950. That's 70 years ago. It was subsequently updated in 1969, which was 51 years ago. That pit is really not a gravel pit. That is a dormant location. It has nothing to do with the proximity of pits and legitimacy of this additional property being considered for removing gravel. To comment further, it was indicated as well by the attorney representing Lakehead that there are 11 pits within a mile and a half, and that was also on the staff report. Clay also mentioned that's quite a significant number as did Ms. Bell. There are a significant amount of addressable properties that have very little to do with the residential nature of this. And yet, this additional 19 acres is considered to be mission critical for development of a local area? That's just hard to believe, very hard to believe. The last comment relates back to then Section D, Desirable Pattern of Development Number Two, dealing with the land use. Again, reinforcing what was mentioned by the representation of the township, devoted official of the township. The intent is to assess and make a determination based on facts and findings of a government agency, ARDC. Again, looking to make the best decision in light of a fact-finding effort that the township has thought is warranted. And again, would ask that the committee consider allowing that to be carried out, so that more relevant information through a appropriate agency that does this as a form of service to be factored into the ultimate decision to either support or reject this permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jenny, at this time, as far as what I'm looking at, is there anyone else that wants to address the board?
Madam Chair, I don't, oh, I do see Mr. Tomps has his hand raised. Prior to that, Mr. Olson had his hand raised. I would, can we move to Mr. Olson, since he was maybe the first, he was on, he was the second on our list prior to Mr. Flanagan. However, he didn't have his hand raised at that time, so if we can go on to Mr. Olson, I think that would, if you're allowing further testimony, that is.
Yes, we're going to, Mr. Olson, you can address the board, please. State your name and address for the record.
He hasn't been unmuted yet, so we will unmute him now, thank you.
I think I'm unmuted now. Thank you very much. This is Ole Olson, 4931 Fish Lake Road. And I want to bring up what I had sent out an email and a copy of Victor Lund, the county highway engineer, and his statements that he made about the entrance regarding the safety of trucks, straight trucks, and tractor-trailers coming in and out of the proposed pit entrance exit. He has stated in his, I sent it to many people, all the planning commission people that are on the website, and also all of the board members, that he has stated in there that it is unsafe, it's too short of a distance for sight-wise, for trucks or tractor-trailers to enter or exit that place from eastbound for any truck. And it is also unsafe for tractor-trailers from westbound. So, we have a problem there in, in a, in a, in a potential that, we know that, we live here, we know that there's going to be accidents there. It's already a very dangerous road, and we have a county engineer stating that the sight distance is too little for having trucks, truck traffic there. I think we're opening ourselves up to a lot of litigation costs. It's going to be a, there's going to be a problem, and it, it, it's just a matter of time. It's not a matter of if it's going to be when, there, there are going to be accidents there. This is not a, this is not a road for trucks to be traveling. And also, too, this is a residential area. It's, it's the, the criteria for approval of a burrow pit. All four of the questions that are asked on every burrow pit application. The answer on this area is no, on every one of them. It does not meet any of the criteria. And for just those reasons, amongst all of the others that you have heard over the last two months, this is not the place for a burrow per, for a permit application to be approved. There's lots of other places that are far less residential. This is a very, very much one of the, one of the best places that St. Louis County has for single-family residence property tax base. It's growing, and there's some fantastic homes that have been built. This place, this area has, has grown so much, and the, look at our per capita income and our tax base that this, this township has. This isn't a place, this isn't a place for digging holes, this isn't a place for digging craters. This is a place for single-family residents to raise their families and et cetera. That's all I have to say for today, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We did have Mark, Mark Tomps, I believe, was the next hand that was raised and has not been addressed. Would you, could we move to Mr. Tomps?
Yes, please.
This isn't Mr. Tomps, it's Carla Koneski. My phone isn't working, and I'd like to speak to the board, if I may.
Can you just state your address, too, for the record?
Uh, yes, 6040 Leveque Road, it's in Duluth, 55803. Are you ready?
Please, we're listening.
Okay, I just want to speak on behalf of our family, the Koneski family. We've been residents of Friedenburg Township for over 100 years. Many generations have sat on the board, been on the fair department, done some planning, building, helping our neighbors. Lakehead has been in Friedenburg for 71 years, and we just wanted to elaborate that we've helped our community, and we've provided jobs, raised our families here, and continue to want to be a part of the development of this beautiful community. And therefore, I just wanted you to be aware that our intentions are good.
Madam Chair, I have been trying to keep track of who is raising their hand to speak next. I am asking the attendees, if they have spoken already, please lower your hand. And we will go by who, I, I'm going to go down the list, beginning at the top right now, because people are, it's, it's difficult to keep track of who is raising their virtual hands in order. So, in order to get through the list, I will go from the top, and then if a previous person has, attendee has already raised their hand and, and provided testimony, I will move on to the next person on the list, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. So, who would, who is our next speaker?
Next is, we don't have a name, but there's a number to this person, 7999341. We see that your hand is raised, we are going to unmute you, please state your name and address for the record.
Are we good?
Yes.
My name is Jason Campbell, at 6586 Friedenburg Lake Road. Just kind of want to reiterate the, the lower pit, 600 feet south of this one, that, that does not see any use. And then just, I have a young family, our, my three girls. Youngest is three, the oldest is seven. We spend our summers outside, my wife teaches school, so she's home all the time. And just the, the noise factor of the backup alarms, et cetera. So, I just kind of want, want to give a younger voice to the discussion. So, that's basically what I've got.
Thank you.
Next on the list with a hand raised is Bruce and Bonnie Anderson. We'll unmute you, and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, this is Bruce Anderson, 4929 Fish Lake Road. Having attended the March 12th meeting, I heard every good reason to vote no to opening this pit. Since that meeting, the road reports submitted overwhelmingly supported a no vote, even though the engineer gave approval indicating the road conditions would be improved in three years. This proposed pit is in the unique position of being in very close proximity to Friedenburg Lake, Island Lake, Deepwater Lake, and Olson Lake, as well as being surrounded by wetlands. Further, its position would trap several residents between this site and Dirtworks Pit on Pioneer Road, giving no relief from dust, noise, and diesel fumes for 10 or more years. This is the wrong place for a pit. Has anyone from the Planning Commission visited this site and driven around the area of these pits in order to make an accurate evaluation to this board? Satellite imagery is not adequate in presenting the facts to this board. Mr. Nelson, I recently emailed Congress and Staber concerning this proposed pit. I received a call back from his office explaining Mr. Staber would not be involved in this county permit issue unless he is petitioned by you. Please tell me why, knowing this permit request is more complicated than average and hotly contested by our township, you did not petition Mr. Staber for his involvement. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Jenny, who would be next? I'm going to let you keep monitoring this, you're doing a great job.
Madam Chair, Jamie, and I forgive me for pronouncing their last name, Malinas, had their hand raised. They are unmuted for testimony at the moment, please state your name and address for the record. Jamie, can you hear us? Jamie? Madam Chair, for sake of time, we will come back to Jamie and move on to the next hand that is raised, is that all right?
Please.
Next, we have Kelly Grass. She'll be unmuted, please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry, my name is Kelly Gergis, and I actually currently live at 1318 Mississippi Avenue.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, please, you can address the board.
Um, I, I actually don't have any notes or a plan on what I was going to say. I went to the meeting in Virginia and sat there with my two sons, but when I'm listening to this, I felt like I just wanted to speak out. I spent almost my entire life on Friedenburg Lake. And what is not showing on that map and couldn't possibly be showing on that map yet is that my family and I were planning on buying some of my mom's property to be accessed off Miller Lane, to build a small house for our family and our young children. And there's no way, if a property, if a pit went in right across the street, that we would do that. I'm not going to subject my young sons to the noise and who knows the environmental pollution, and it just would lose interest in that. And not to mention, I would be devastated that an area that I do see growing and a lot of people moving in would become just dirt, the value of dirt, and not everything else that's going on around it. I think it's not a big ask to, to, to wonder if anyone has come and seen the areas when they talk about the roads. The roads are very unsafe as it is. My family, I've come from a family of runners, we run out there, we bike out there. It's very easy to get rid, driven off the road as it is right now. I see only a scenario of people getting injured or even killed off of there. Again, another reason why I wouldn't move my young family out there if all of a sudden we're talking about 20 more trucks a day, when it's just nothing but blind spots on that road. It sounds to me that Friedenburg could just be nothing more than a bunch of gravel pits when it's a beautiful area, and, you know, I would love to move my family out there, but I would not do that, I will not build a cross from a gravel pit. And I think that that sentiment would be echoed by a lot of people. I'm in my 40s, my sons are four. You know, we would love to be there, but I, I really hope that you hear the people that live there that are there all the time. Like I said, I've spent my entire life in Friedenburg. It is a wonderful area, and the people are wonderful. And they are just speaking out because they are the ones that are there every day. They are the ones that are worried about the safety and the environmental cost. And I just really, really ask the board to please consider why they're speaking out. This isn't political, this is nothing but personal, and, and, and an area that we love, that we want to see respected and understood. And the only people that understand it are the people that are out there and the people speaking up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
It looks like Patty Wheeler is the next with their hand raised. So, we will unmute Patty Wheeler, please state your name and address for the record.
Patty Wheeler, my address is 6516 Friedenburg Lake Road. If you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, okay. So, I have written so many things down, and you don't want to hear them all. But one thing I would ask of you is to please focus on the facts. The facts are on your, on your staff report, you know, the- The facts are on your, on your staff report, you know, the facts and findings, and not so much what the township is doing. Because the township has been trying its best to do something for the people it's trying to protect. Does the use conform to the land use plan? You yourself say it's mostly, it's all residential. And Friedenberg Township went to the trouble years ago to revise and update their comprehensive land use plan. It's rural residential. It is not what the county has. I know the county has all the power here. And the purpose of this, and I quote, "to do the land use plan for the county," which was accepted by the county, "is to provide township residents and St. Louis County Planning and Zoning Department with a document that will serve as a guide when they are faced with making land use decisions in Friedenberg Township. Please give the township a voice." We went to the trouble of doing the land use comprehensive plan, which you accepted, and now it's being totally, totally ignored. The reason the township had the first resolution against it is because of this and because there's been so much outcry. The entire community is against this. Nothing has brought us together like this. Neighborhood compatibility. How do you think dropping a gravel pit into the middle of an existing and long existing neighborhood is compatible? And never mind all the lakes and wetlands. Hundreds of people live on properties surrounding this property that never dreamed they would have to share their beautiful and peaceful neighborhood with a gravel pit. It's not compatible if it diminishes the quality of people's daily lives and the surrounding environment or creates more traffic and creates traffic safety issues or lowers your property values. It's not compatible. It's like you saying yourself, it's primarily residential. Let's, can we please keep it that way? Also, Dee, you talk about, is the location and character, you know, considered consistent? No. And, gosh, if I could find my notes. It says that, you know, the last includes allowances for businesses that are essential to the ability to live and work in rural areas. This isn't Lakehead's only option. And, you know, you heard from them, they said, oh, all the Minnesota Power is selling all these properties. Well, I don't know how to break this to them, but they're not the only company that does road work, foundations, and septic work. We've got multiple. Just look on their neighborhood app and you'll see them list this. It is not essential that Lakehead put a gravel pit in this location. It's not the right location. And talk about road safety. I was told by Walter Rapp, one of the township supervisors, that there are actually three studies done on this road. I haven't seen them, one was by a state, but this is, I'm quoting him. And he said, two out of the three studies said that it's unsafe. So please look more, more into this. And I guess, one last thing, I would like to say something about Lakehead here. For, you know, they go on and on about how they've been so wonderful to the community. And yes, they've, they've been a part of the community, they've made a lot of money off of the community, and they have always been able to do whatever they've wanted. They carry a lot of power in this community, and they have not been kind to people that disagree with them. They felt, and during all of this, and they knew that, they kept it a top secret. If it were such a wonderful thing for the community, as they say, they kept it a secret because they knew nobody would be for it, and they didn't care. They told neighbors, more than one neighbor, that the county was going to give them the gravel pit because they're never turned down by you, that this was just a formality and there was nothing any one of us could do about it. This is what they have said. They had to fill out two different applications. On their second one, after listening to people express, but we have poured out our heart and soul to you to talk about what this is going to do to our daily lives and how we feel about this. Lakehead listened to all those. And yet, in their second application, they didn't address any concerns at all. Instead of saying, we hear you, we want to work with the community, they basically gave us the middle finger and they asked for everything. They didn't reduce hours. They asked for the gravel and the crushing. And, and an additional thing, they added the screening all year round. So we can never, ever get a break from it. And even with restrictions, we will be dealing with chronic dust and noise. You can't put enough restrictions in place for that. Clay mentioned this, after the last public hearing, we were crushed because we knew, we sensed that nobody cared, nobody was listening, and that you were going to vote this thing through. In fact, that's what we were told. We really have no voice. Only the company, only the company gets the voice. They have all the power and we have nothing because it's all about business here. And so the county, the township, after listening to all the residents and knowing of our heartache and all of this, they passed the moratorium and for a study to be done because that seemed like a very reasonable and fair thing to do because none of this process has been fair. This wasn't done as a power grab from the county. This was done to protect the government. They, it was a move taken because the entire neighborhood and township was against this. How do you fault the governing body for listening and caring and trying to protect the people that elected them to do just that? We are, and you know, some, our people are implying that Lakehead is the victim here or the landowner. No, they're going to create victims. They have always gotten their way in this.
Madam Chair, can we stick to the facts and not?
Yes.
Please.
All right, okay, well, I'm just going to, well, those are facts. So I am simply asking you, the commission, to protect my neighborhood and my quality of life, and to realize how important that is. And to let a township that lives here and knows its people and cares about them have a say in this. We are pleading with you to deny this permit based on facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, who would be your next speaker? Anyone who's listening, try to limit your testimony to five minutes or under just so that we can have everyone opportunity to talk. And also, when addressing the board, please stick to facts about the gravel pit. I don't want to hear any kind of he said, she said. This is, just let's stick to the facts of the case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It looks like the person who was Jamie Malinas that was going, that had, had their hand raised earlier, has rejoined. Can we attempt to unmute Jamie again for testimony? Jamie, you're unmuted. If you can provide your name and address for the record, please.
Great, let's try this again. It's Jamie Malinas at 5350 Beaver River Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So I just want to quickly address my points. And I did email this to all the chairs. But I am opposed to another pit in Friedenberg. I grew up in this area, and I used to walk along the Fish Lake Road and Beaver River Road a lot as a little kid to the minuet. Walk along the road and you walk back. And over the years, it has been worn down and it's falling apart. And both the Beaver River Road and the Fish Lake Road is not a road you see anybody walking on. There's increased truck traffic. To see someone even walking their dog on it, you think, boy, maybe not the best decision. Looking at the Traffic Engineer's Report, he talks about six-foot shoulders along the Beaver River Road and how that would be fine for the trucks hauling on it. I don't know what to say. Maybe he didn't go out and see it, like he said, he was, he went out and looked at this area. But he's missing the half-mile stretch that actually doesn't have six-foot shoulders, and it actually doesn't even have a fog line, which I emailed the pictures and I'm showing the lacking fog line on that section of road. So very concerned with increased traffic. I also have two little boys, like to bike and go to the mailbox with me. Very concerned about the increased truck traffic on this road with them. Looking at our comprehensive plan for Friedenberg, it talks about demographics of Friedenberg as well. It says it's 25.4 square miles of land, and we have six gravel pits. This is in 2018. Just to compare, Genesund has 61.5 square miles of land and eight gravel pits. And they are 2.4 times our size. And I'm just talking about landmass, not about even the water. It just seems like Friedenberg has had their fill of the gravel pits. We need to use our existing gravel pits and close the ones that aren't being used and they've been open too long. So I just want to say, I don't know if we can't use an existing pit for that. I don't see any need for this new pit. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Jenny, who would be our next?
Yep, Madam Chair, it looks like Tom Kaiser.
Okay. Okay, I'm unmuted. Hello, this is Tom Kaiser, and I'm here with my wife, Catherine Harris.
I am the owner of two properties on Friedenberg Lake, on Friedenberg Lake. 4813 Datka Road and 6201.
6601.
6601.
North.
North Datka Road. I've grown up in this area and spent every summer of my life on Friedenberg Lake. We were not notified of the, this hearing because we don't live technically within a quarter mile. However, the, the noise, the dust, and everything will certainly affect all of the properties on Friedenberg Lake, as well as many properties on Island Lake. And I encourage the Planning Commission to vote against this conditional use permit. I believe my husband also has something to say.
Yes. Yes, I had a question. The gentleman who spoke from the family that owns LTI Holdings mentioned that the ultimate use of the property would be for residential. When does he see that happening? You know, is it five years, 10 years, a year? That would be nice to know. So, the other thing I'd like to state is, when my wife says she spent all her life there, her family bought the property in 1958, so they've been there 62 years, and they're very good stewards of the property. And that's it.
Okay, thank you for your testimony.
Jenny, who's up?
Well, Madam Chair, before we go on to the next, can I please ask those who have provided testimony to, again, lower your hand so that we can get through the list? Thank you. Wendy Johnson, it appears that you're the next on the list to provide testimony. You're unmuted. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, yes, this is Wendy Johnson. I live at 6522 Friedenberg Lake Road. And my husband and I both signed in together on this call, and I'm going to defer to him because he represents the 27 property owners around Friedenberg Lake.
Hi, this is Ken Johnson at 6522 Friedenberg Lake Road, and also President of the Friedenberg Lake Association. We have 27 homeowners around the lake that are all impacted by this gravel pit. We have unanimous support for denial of this permit. We don't see any redeeming value in this. And we certainly would encourage you to support the moratorium and study by ARDC that the township has come up with. We feel that this is a very reasonable process that they're proposing, and we'd like you to allow us to have the time. We're investing $25,000, I think, is the amount of dollars that were approved by the town board to spend on this study. And we would certainly like the opportunity to have that study completed before you make your final decision. I also have a question about maintaining the tree farm. That was stated in the presentation by, I believe, the Lakehead Trucking Person. What does he mean by maintaining the tree farm? Every single tree in the tree farm, or what? What is the extent of that maintenance? Is it forever, for the length of the gravel pit? I guess we'd like an answer to that. In conclusion, I don't think the approval criteria as laid out by the Planning Commission has been met. Contrary to what the county planning office has stated, this use is not compatible with the existing neighborhood. How can you even believe that when the majority of the people that live in the neighborhood are in opposition to it? How in the world can you say it's compatible? That makes no sense at all. And is the location and character of the proposed use consistent with the desirable pattern of development in the area? Absolutely not. This is a residential lakes area. Gravel pit has no place in this neighborhood. If you approve this, you're going against your own criteria. And why have the criteria? How many of the Planning Commission members have actually visited the site? I agree with that, too. They need to get here to really see it on the ground, what the impact is that this gravel pit would have on our homes, our neighborhoods, our livelihood, everything. It's a travesty if this thing goes ahead. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny, who would be next?
Janet Olson. Janet Olson, you are unmuted. Please provide your name and address for the record.
Janet Olson, 4931 Fish Lake Road.
Welcome, Janet, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. This is such an odd thing to do, having a meeting like this. And I wish you could see face to face and our concern for this. One of the things that I'd like to address is that Lakehead says that there's going to be 20 trucks that will be utilizing this pit. But figure 20 trucks times eight trips in and out, that's 160 loads per day. I mean, this isn't just 20 trucks coming and going in one day. We also live on Olson Lake where a professor, Tim Craig, from UMD, brings his classroom out to study our bog and to look at the box. When we spoke to him, he went on Google Map and was looking at it. And he said that from the air, it looks like total devastation from all of the pits that are around us. And we just don't need another gravel pit here. We're not against gravel pits, just the placement of them. So I would so appreciate if you would just let the study be done and figure out if this is indeed the best place for a pit. We're also talking that it is connected to another pit. So this could essentially be, you know, a 60-acre pit. And this is not the area for that. There is too many lakes. This is so close to Olson Lake, Deep Lake, Friedenberg Lake, Island Lake. And so I would just really encourage everybody to take a step back. Let's do a study. Once this starts, this can't be undone. There's always time to undo this. We can stop this for a time and rethink this. It doesn't have to be decided as, let's just go ahead, let's put in another gravel pit, let's put in another gravel pit. Let's make a conscious decision that this is indeed a good place for one. And I think what you're hearing from many of us is that we are all in agreement that it is not a good placement for it. This isn't a personal vendetta against our neighbors or against Lakehead. This is just our neighbors saying that it's going to cost them, it's going to cost us in our property taxes, in our quality of life, our resale of our homes. It's going to just cost us too much. And we have time to stop and rethink this. And I'm pleading with all of you to please take this in consideration. Let's just stop and look and make, do a study to see if this is indeed an appropriate place. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair. Next on the list is Calvin Janisch. Calvin, we will unmute you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Did you say Calvin Janisch?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Calvin Janisch. I have a cabin on 4840. I have a cabin on four eight four three Datka Road. My wife and I have owned a cabin on Friedenberg Lake for over 30 years. And every year, we can't wait to get back to its beauty and peacefulness. And I am two years shy of 90, so I have been around for a long time. And gravel pits are no stranger to me. While I'm well aware of the importance and need for gravel pits, I am also aware of the negative impact their operations can have on some environments. So as I see it, there are two basic responsibilities of governments, federal, state, and local. First and foremost is to protect the safety and quality of life for its individual residents and communities. The other is to maintain the strong economy. Short of picking up our cabins and homes and putting them somewhere else, we have only one option, and that is to make our voices heard and hope that they fall on sympathetic ears. LTI Holdings, on the other hand, has many options. And one is the option of finding other location for its gravel pit. I feel it would be unethical to allow LTI or any company to establish gravel pit operations in such vulnerable areas as ours, thus diminishing our joy of living in the area, our ability to protect its natural characteristics for the future and our property values. Once it's done, it's done, and there is no going back. I implore the commissioners to do the right thing and protect our way of life by not approving the permit for LTI. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Jenny here.
Can I? Whatever.
Yes, I'm here.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good.
It sounded like somebody else had something to say, but that appeared to be all of the people on the line that had their hands raised. I'm assuming that is all that want to speak? Would you like me to ask a question or do you want to ask the question if there are any more that wish to speak? And then again, I will ask everyone who has spoken to please lower your hand.
Yes. We just want to make sure we get all the testimonies so we're, so it'll be the opportunity. And anyone who has their hand raised, it's already spoken, can you unraise your hand?
And Madam Chair, I did just see two more people raise their hand.
Okay, I'm just going to let you call on them, please, since you're keeping better track of who's first.
Darrell Harper. Darrell, we will unmute you and please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Darrell Harper. I live at thirty-seven oh six Decker Road in Duluth. And my family has owned property at six five three four Friedenberg Lake Road since 1908. I just would like the board to consider that this is a single issue. It's not something that perhaps the board is a little concerned about because we're, township has been like a, perhaps a sliver under your fingernail. It's kind of been festering for a long time and perhaps we've made some waves on some other issues. I hope the board looks at this just for its single merits. And I would like to commend everyone who has spoken against this because they've done so eloquently. So I just, again, I would like the board to consider everything on its merits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Seglum? Sorry, Madam Chair. Peter Seglum?
Hello?
You're unmuted. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yep. My name is Peter Seglum, sixty-five twenty Friedenberg Lake Road. I think I'm probably maybe the newest guy here on the lake. I've only been here a few years. And I just, again, want to stick to facts, yes. The fact is, when we were searching for our dream house, you know, we wanted to be on a lake and we wanted to be in a quiet neighborhood. I lived on Park Point before that and I was kind of done with traffic and issues of this big city. So when we picked this place, one of the requirements was, well, not a gravel pit. So I, we put our life into this, this little house that we have and it may not be a castle to a lot of people, but it's my, my dream house. And honestly, if I was looking here and there was a gravel pit this close to this property, there is no way I would pay what I did for this house. And I, I'm looking at, if this pit goes in, I'm going to have to move because I plan on being out of here in a, in a bag when I pass. I don't plan on being anywhere else. And this would devastate, devastate our family. And so I just wish that, and I don't, I didn't listen to the whole beating this morning and I apologize. I came in here a little bit late. But I just want to say that I, I really think that the county should look at the studies, please. I, all the emails I've read say no, 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 no. And I know that progress and, and everything needs to go forward, but I think it'd be irresponsible for the county to approve this without first letting us complete our studies. And I, and I wish no harm to, you know, LTI Holdings and everything. I, you know, hey, they're a business, they have to make money. I know Mr. Thompson wants to sell his property and, and that's great. But just, I, I really know that I can't live here with a gravel pit. I will be moving. So that's all I have to say and I bless everyone.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we just have one more?
Yep, Madam Chair, I did reach out to Janet Olson. It seems that their hand is still raised. So if we wanted to see if they wanted to provide any further testimony, we can unmute them.
Okay.
Janet Olson, you're unmuted if you have anything further to add. Angie, can you unmute? Hello?
I think she has been muting herself.
Okay. Here, it appears that you're unmuted. Can you?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize my hand was still up and I've already spoke. So I just want to just say thank you to everyone who has spoken so eloquently and, and God bless all of us in the decisions we make today. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we did just get another message from Mike Anderson, who was on the list, I think had his hand up at one point and then lowered. So can we please allow Mr. Anderson to provide testimony?
Yes, thank you Jenny.
Hi, this is Mike Anderson. This is Mike Anderson at sixty-four fifty-six Olson Drive. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you. Now, I, we own the 40 acres that is to the Thompson's property and we're ready to begin our retirement up there. And I just wonder, I just want, I don't think I have to mention what a huge impact would this have as far as our residential development plans in the neighborhood and being up there. And the other thing I have a question on is I noticed on the map, there was like a 50-foot setback on the drawing on that side. And I was understanding that was a 100-foot setback. And right away, you start thinking, is this the beginning of things being different than, than you expected it to be? And I know the, the need for gravel, I understand that. And I'd be more than willing to pay more for any gravel that I need for the building plans that I might have. Other than that, thanks for all your help and for everybody that's spoken. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Jenny again.
Thanks for everyone speaking. And so I, with that, I'm going to be closing our public hearing and.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Um, we, I don't want to keep delaying, but we do have several call-in attendees that I don't know that they have the option to virtually raise their hand.
Okay, why don't you unmute them and see if, okay?
Okay, thank you. And we'll start at the beginning in just a minute here. Caller, I know caller seven nine 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 three four one already spoke. Angie, can you unmute them and see if they have any testimony, further testimony to provide? Thank you.
No, I did not intend to do that.
Caller nine two one eight two three four, three zero four zero, do you have any testimony to provide?
It does not look like they have any audio hooked up.
Okay, so we will go on to BN. Do you have any testimony to provide? Hearing no testimony from BN. Can we move to the next call-in user? Angie, can you read what call-in user number that is?
It is call-in user 11.
Call-in user 11, do you have any testimony to provide? Call-in user 24. Do you have any testimony to provide? Call-in user 24, we're going to mute you again. Call-in user 25, do you have any testimony to provide? Call-in user 25, we are going to mute you. Caller user 26, do you have any testimony to provide? Call-in user 26, we are going to mute you. And finally, call-in user, excuse me, 33. Do you have any testimony to provide? Call-in user 33, we are going to mute you. Madam Chair, it appears that some of the previous attendees that provided testimony also have their hands raised. Oh, it looks like they just lowered them. That being said, I do not see anyone else, anyone else that has their hands raised.
Thank you Jenny. With that, I am closing the public hearing part of this hearing. We're going to go into the business meeting. Just the board members are able to talk and move forward. So I would entertain some discussion or a motion.
This is, this is Ray, I have a motion, if you're willing to accept it.
One second, Ray, hold on.
All right.
Didn't, didn't we table the motion from the last meeting?
We did.
Don't we have, act on that motion before we accept another motion?
I would agree with that.
Ray, your motion was on the floor from the last meeting.
Actually, that motion was made by Commissioner Nelson and I would withdraw it at this point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam, Madam Chair, I can read the motion if that would be of any help.
Well, the second has been withdrawn.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Nelson and I would withdraw my support for that motion.
Okay.
Okay, with that being said then, Ray, if you want to restate or make a new motion, you are welcome to at this time.
All right, I would make a motion to deny without prejudice giving the township and the Lake Association what they're looking for and giving ARDC time to complete their study. So it would be a motion to deny without prejudice. And then to come back after the study is completed.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
Any discussion on the motion?
Pardon me?
Are we having any discussion on the motion?
Are we having any discussion?
Right, Dave. Generally, on Robert's Rules of Order, the motion is made, you don't discuss the motion unless it's been supported. That's how it generally.
Thank you.
Yep.
Madam Chair, Board, or Commissioner Mayor Pollak kept his hand raised.
Dave?
Yeah. I, I know what was just said. I guess we can't discuss this at all until there's a second. But the, Mike, there's a problem when you make this denial without prejudice, even without a chance for a second. What does that mean? Is there something that if it's not acted on in 60 days with denial without prejudice? Is anything that it automatically happens because we haven't done something? How long is that good for? Denial without prejudice? Jen will probably have to answer.
Jen, I'm going to support this motion so we can have some discussion. And so please explain.
Um, if a, if a motion is made to deny without prejudice, there isn't necessarily a time limit to that decision, to my knowledge. It would be until such time the information is provided as to the reason why the motion was denied without prejudice.
Say that again.
Unless there. So if a motion is made to deny without prejudice, unless there is a time limit put on that denial without prejudice, there isn't a timeframe in which it would need to be necessarily acted on, to the best of my knowledge, until such time that that information that you're requesting because of a denial without prejudice is in hand to proceed with the hearing. So based on this decision, it's being denied without prejudice to allow for time for a study to be done. So once that study is done, then the hearing could be re-held.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Nelson.
Yes, Commissioner Nelson.
Madam Chair, I, I, first of all, I have a number of things to say on this. I want to clear up some things because there was some, there's some things within the testimony today from individuals that, they directly mentioned me as their elected official. And I, and I, I feel the need that, that this board actually hears at least my recollection. I will tell you that after the last meeting out in the parking lot, I was approached by Supervisor Sitch and one other individual. I did tell them that, that, you know, that this was a permitted, this, this application met the criteria and that they should meet with Lakehead Trucking. and that they should meet with Lakehead Trucking and try to figure out a plan going forward. That is what I said, not that it was going to be passed by this board, because quite frankly, I'm one vote on this board. And I respect, I want every board member here to know how much I respect their votes and their right to have their say in these things. It is not just what I have to say. So Mr. Sitch's recollection of the discussion is significantly different than my own. I would, I would also like to, to comment on the contact with Congressman Staubert. I did talk with Congressman Staubert and explained to him that there were no federal issues here, and consequently, there was no reason to get Congressman Staubert involved in any way. If there was one, I did advise the congressman, if something came up that had a federal, uh, a federal relationship, that I would certainly be back with him. Next, I, I have to, I have to correct one other thing, because it was quoted, one of the individuals testifying said that Supervisor Rupp was quoted as saying there are several safety studies done, and the safety has yet, you know, yet to be determined on the road. When in fact, you know, it, for the record, the, the simple statement of fact by our traffic safety engineer was, in summary, it is my opinion that an entrance for this proposed burrow pit located at the proposed easement on Fish Lake Road would be reasonably acceptable from a traffic safety perspective. I mean, that's our tra, that's St. Louis County's traffic engineer addressing that. It is difficult for me to, to be speaking on this. I've heard from a lot of people, from both sides of this issue. But the, the town board itself is a very, has been a very split board on this issue. And I believe that if we deny this in any way, we are setting a dangerous precedent for our planning commission. I'm not going to, I'm not going to go either way as, as to whether this is, it should be approved or not approved by all of you, but I'm telling you, it's a really dangerous, in my opinion, it's a very dangerous precedent that we are setting. Because if something isn't liked that we're doing, run to the town board, get a moratorium put on, and, and thus essentially giving townships that choose not to do their own planning and zoning, veto authority. I, I think that's a dangerous precedent. Now, I admire the fact that, that Friedenberg is, is entertaining a study with ARDC. And I think that study should go forward, and they should study the impact on their community and how that relates to their community. But that's after this application, not during the middle of this application or this board's consideration of this application. That's just how I feel about it. I, we are, we are setting ourselves up for a very interesting future if, if we're willing to take this precedent. And quite frankly, I believe this one likely will find its way to the courts, and, and that might be the place where it needs to be. But from our perspective, if they've met the criteria, I, I think that, that we have to consider it strongly. That's just how I feel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dave, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Donald, I'd like you to flip your slides, because I want, the very last slide that you had. Hold on.
Which slide would you like?
I, I'm trying to see the one about the safety in the road. But, but just keep going and stop for a second. And deep on here, the proposed entrance has been deemed reasonably acceptable. He said, there's another one, though. Put back another page, because when it, go back another yet. Go open the subject project, go back another, there's, there's, when I'm looking for, okay, go the other way, no, back where you were. What I'm after is, keep going. He deems it, one more. Yeah. There's one more yet, let's see, is it go to questions now? Is this, what if he never says the location? There's, there's one in here where, on the deal, that they have to get the appropriate road authority to approve the entrance.
That's the condition precedent, is that what you're looking for?
That would show you excess access approval from the appropriate authority. So even though he's already said that this is, if this gets passed, it still has to go again, that this is absolutely a safe entrance to that road. Correct?
May I, Madam Chair, may I take a run, may I take a run at that, knowing the, the process that Public Works goes through on all driveway applications?
Please.
An application is submitted, and then our traffic engineer goes out and views the site and the application. Then they receive a preliminary approval to install the entrance, and then at that point, our traffic engineer goes back out and does a final approval as the appropriate road authority. That's how we do them, so yes, there, there are still going to be at least one more site visit on this, on this driveway entrance.
That's what I thought. Okay, I got a second question, and I don't know if anybody can answer it, you're all going to shake your heads. You've been hearing about cranes or migratory birds. Is there any issue on this, that environmentally, this is going to get hung up because there are these certain birds that are in that area?
Just, may I, Madam Chair?
No, I'd like Donald to answer that, or Jen first.
You can hunt these things, just so you know.
Well, you know, I, the reason I'm asking is there's been crazy things with different little animals and moths and frogs and such. Is there any issue with these birds that have been mentioned? Do you know, Donald, or Jen?
Madam Chair, there's no, we have not received any, any information to that effect, that this would affect the, um, any wildlife, nor is there an environmental study that is required or mandatory to be done at this point.
That's okay, I got one more thing. This moratorium that's created, and, and you look for all your information. Okay, you get all this information, and it goes to the town, township, okay? Are they planning on taking their planning back? I mean, is there any, anything that's been said about this? Because the reason I'm asking that is you can do this whole thing and come up with the information. We currently have the rules and regulations that we're looking at this whole thing. If they come up with something like this, the only ones that can implement that, they'd have to take it back to their own planning and say, this is how we want to do it. Because it's extraneous from the, how the planning and zoning works with the rules and regulations we're under. Something they're getting information on.
Are you done, Dave?
Uh, yes, I am.
Just checking, thank you. Diane?
Good afternoon. Um, I just, first off, I wanted to let the lady know that said that this board doesn't care, that we don't spend endless hours going over this and doing this on our own time, because we don't care about the area. Second, as I'm going through the correspondence, I'm seeing that on May 10th, there was an email sent from a Walter Rapp. He's a supervisor for Friedenberg Township, and Mr. Rapp said that he is in favor of this. On May 12th, we have another supervisor, Tim Wagner, who states that he is also in favor of this. I'm getting mixed answers from Friedenberg Township. Are they for it, or are they against it? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Diane. So we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion, okay.
Madam Chair, I.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Ray. Chair, this is Commissioner Nelson. My call just failed about a minute, minute and a half ago, so I lost the last minute, minute and a half. The, the motion that's on the floor is still for the denial without prejudice?
Correct.
I would like to, would like to weigh in one more time, there was a question brought up about planning and zoning. I don't see any indication from the Friedenberg Town Board that they wish to take over planning and zoning in their township. But they do wish to take over planning and zoning on their gravel pits. And that has been indicated to me by supervisors, but it's hard when it's a split vote down there. I've never gone against the town board, but it's, it's, this has consistently been a 3-2 vote. And it makes it very difficult, if they're not willing to take back planning and zoning, giving them the veto power does not make sense to me, and I'll stop again with that. But I wanted to, I wanted to indicate that I have heard no desire to take back planning and zoning.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Roger. Again, I'm, I'm at, some of the things folks were saying, I had to endure because of the process we're doing now. I, I'm giving a lot more leeway. If we would have been sitting in a room and people were saying those things, I would have been all over them. I, I don't have to sit and listen to all my heartstringed feelings. I want facts, I want to know what's going to, what you think is, when you say my property is going to devalue, show me the facts. Show me the proof that your property devalues when there's a gravel pit there. We had the same discussion when there were cell towers. You know, the sky is falling, the cell tower is coming, my property is, I can't even give it away, no one wants to live here. That's not true. Those are not facts, those are lies. So all these things that we heard today, I'm, I'm trying to decipher what's fact and what is fiction. So at, at the end of the day, a lot of what I've heard from these folks is, they just don't like it, okay? Maybe the people in business don't like residents. Does that give the person in business the right to say they don't like residents? So I, when, when we look at the facts of this, the property in question has the ability and has the right to ask for a conditional use permit. For us to deny that, and just like when we approve it, we have to have findings. You can't just say, I deny it, or I just want it. We have to have findings. And I'm curious to the motion maker, what your findings are, why it doesn't, why the applicant's application doesn't fit. If we go to court, if this passes, and we go to court, trust me, the first thing the judge is going to ask is, where are your findings? We've been to court several times on this, so I'm just trying to clear up everything in front of us right now. I'm done, thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Ray.
Yes, Ray?
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn, I will draw my second.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Nelson, is that you?
Yes, it is me. Madam Chair, I know no one wants to make this motion, so I will make it. I will make a motion that we approve this permit based on the findings and facts as presented, and that is my motion.
Support.
So the motion, Commissioner Nelson, and we have support, but Roger, is there any discussion? Steve, I see you have your hand up, please.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is tied to this or not, you know, about the township, um, you know, people that are, are voting for their township, but, you know, it was three yeas and two nays on hiring Arrowhead Regional Development Commission. So, you know, there's a letter in our packet that says that, so, so, you know, it wasn't like, uh, everyone's for it. You know, 3 to 2, so, so I just wanted to put that in there, if it wasn't mentioned that, in that manner.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, um, one second, Roger, I, Dave had his hand up first.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, now I got to remember. Well, when, how long ago did we take over planning and zoning from them? Anybody know?
My understanding would be eighties or nineties, I believe.
Okay, because, yeah, Keith had, had made some good comments. It's easy to put stuff together, and you're not going to have to act on it, you're just going to give us information, and we already have all the information how this works. So, yeah, I have difficulty, what, if, if the concern is so great about all this stuff, take it back. That's all.
Okay, are you done, Dave?
Yep.
Thank you, okay, Roger?
Well, I thought Ray had his hand up, but, oh.
I'm sorry. I called on you, Ray can be next.
I, I just think some of the findings here that, that I agree with, um, staff, some of the things in here also, you know, there's 20 trucks a day, and they are going on to an artery. They're not using the side roads, they're using a main road that, you know, that, believe it or not, all of us pay more, I believe it, Commissioner, it's a half cent more on gas sales tax or sales tax, so the commissioners can fix roads. Well, this surely, hopefully bumps itself up into fixing this road with our money more than, not something in my district, of course, maybe in your district. I, I would think this might help get it done a little sooner, and maybe Mr. Lund could help that. But some of the things the guys were talking about, you know, the merits and the years, that one's a pit, not a pit, and I just look at what we have to deal with right now, and I see, and I hear them, I hear them, I hear you loud and clear. But I also understand in front of us is a legal application, and every time I go through it, other than, is it good for the neighborhood or not? You know, it's compatible, there's 11 privately owned power pits in a, in a mile and a half. You know, that's, that's, those are facts. So, I, I just, I, I realize it's, oh, I know what I was thinking. Maybe some of you remember, we used to go to Carlton for some of these classes for planning and zoning, and at one point, there's a case very similar to what we had, where a city or a, a town board changed the zoning in the middle of the, there was a 60-day period, and they changed the law. And when they came back, they, the judge said, hey, hey, you know, you can't do that, you, you can't act on that in between. No, you know, I don't remember verbi, verbatim, but I just remember something similar to this, and it's kind of like... but I just remember something similar to this. And it's kind of like, they've, they've got their foot in the door. They're in the door. They're talking. We're talking. If we deny, we deny with facts. If we approve, we approve with facts. After that, we can't say. But to use what they did as, for me to use that statute or whatever the thing that was called, that they wrote to justify my vote today, I, I can't do that. I just can't personally, I can't do that. So that's why I'm in favor of this motion right now. I'm done. Thank you.
Um, Dave, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, just after Roger made that presentation, the thing is, is that the, the people that have been on the call have to realize that there's a lot of work that's gone into this right now. And one of the things is, is that condition precedent about that final approval of the road is very important. And that'll come into play at the time. The other very important one is to put on condition concurrent number five about the no crushing, the recycling of asphalt or hot mix plant allowed without the submission and approval of a class one standard. This is not just a cut and dried situation that's being done. Therefore, there's an understanding of the problems of the unique to that area. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, so I, to get back, I've got a motion and a second.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can I have a point of clarification? There's a motion second and per facts and findings, does that include all conditions precedent and concurrent?
Yes. Madam Chair, Commissioner Nelson, it does.
Okay, so we both have the motion maker in a second to clarify that for you.
Great.
Thank you.
Can, can you repeat the motion?
Jenny, could you restate the motion, please?
Yeah, the, the motion was to approve an extractive use class two general purpose borrow pit with the facts and findings and conditions, conditions precedent, the applicant shall obtain access approval from the appropriate road authority, conditions concurrent, all minimum extractive use standards shall be followed. The extractive use activity, activity shall be limited to less than 40 acres as legally described, including a haul road as described in the letter of intent exhibit A between the applicant and joint property owners. The applicant shall adhere to all county, state, and federal regulations. The Wetland Conservation Act shall be followed, and no crushing, recycling of asphalt or hot mix plant shall be allowed without the submission and approval of an extractive use class one performance standard permit.
Dave, thank you.
Dave, you have your hand up?
I forgot to take it down.
Okay. Right, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Roger, is your hand still up from before?
It must be. I thought I took it down.
So, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor of devotion signified by I or support. And Jenny, please do the roll call.
Spato?
Support.
What is the motion? Anderson?
In favor of support.
Rorsay?
I support.
Neal?
I support.
Brava?
Support.
Lipovich?
I support.
Pollak?
Support.
Commissioner Nelson?
I support.
Manick?
I support.
Look, all in favor, Madam Chair?
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Just for the hearing this afternoon, is there anything else?
No, Madam Chair. I do just want to clarify, though, before we end the hearing, that there were several people that raised their hand after the hearing was closed by you. And the reason they were not called upon is because public testimony was closed at that time.
Thank you for the clarification. I would entertain the motion to adjourn, please.
Before you adjourn, Madam Chair, one, one point, I don't know if you said anything, Jenny, but if everyone opened their packet, they realized they have to send in their vouchers with the, right? I didn't know if you said...
And there should have been a return envelope in there with that.
I just wanted to clarify it.
If for some reason you cannot mail it in, email me and we can work through it that way.
Thank you.
You may be able to allow like a picture or electronics in the middle. But just let me know if you have issues.
All right, now I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Support?
I'll support it.
Wait, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
You want me to do roll on that one, Madam Chair?
Oh, sure, for entertainment.
It was unanimous.
Well, to be technical, let's go through Spato.
Yeah, sure. I'd like to do that.
Anderson?
Aye, aye, aye.
Rorsay?
Aye.
Neal?
Hi.
Brava?
Yes, 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 yes.
Lipovich?
Hi.
Pollak?
You asked for this. No. Yes, yes.
Commissioner Nelson?
Yes.
Manick?
Yes.
All, all in favor, Madam Chair, to adjourn?